Good evening. Are you ready to start, or should we take a break here? We wait for... Well, good evening, members of the board and Madam President who stepped out shortly here. I'm Jordan Knighton, architect with NTD Architecture, and it's our great pleasure to be here tonight, hopefully to be presenting and talking to you about a beginning, the beginning of integrated knowledge, vision and direction. I'd like to introduce my leadership team with me here today that's helped in preparing the Sustainable Facilities Master Plan. To my left here is Derek LaBrecque, architect and our project manager, and he's a design and educational design and sustainable expert. And to my right here is Dr. Frank Locker, who's an internationally acclaimed educational planner. And in our audience, we have Steve Alva, who's with our construction cost estimating group, The Cumming Corporation. You know, about four months ago, I imagine you were probably asking yourself the question, how can we prepare students to meet the challenges of our century if our schools virtually remain unchanged? Well, about four months ago, you asked us to proceed with transforming your strategic vision into contemporary 21st century tool, that which we call a Sustainable Facilities Master Plan. The formula for success was written by you. It's called Putting Children First. Four months ago, we began on a path to an integrated vision of high-performance education plus high-performance facilities and community partnerships that would help to yield even further high-performing students. A Sustainable Facilities Master Plan is a concept of systemic thinking. It's about understanding the multiple benefits when several strands of sustainability are tackled simultaneously. In our industry, we call this the triple bottom line. It's about balancing the equation you see here in this picture between social equity, economic development, and environmental stewardship. Over the course of the last four months, we've been quite engaged, as you can imagine. We've been on over 100 sites. We've done 88 school assessments plus district support facilities to achieve these 100-site visits and assessments. Our team has been very broad and very deep. It's been composed of multiple architects, multiple engineers, construction estimators, landscape architects. And we've assessed and met with the school principals, custodial staff, grounds people. We've conducted surveys at each site with both staff and parents. And as you can imagine, it's been a pretty engaged four months for us. We have examples here that we'll share with you later. The executive summary alone for the 88 school sites is a very unsustainable product. We've had a team that's had boots on the grounds, engaging in the heart and soul of what this is all about, educational visioning. And we've had multiple workshops and planning sessions. We've had district administrative workshops at several levels. We've had K-12 workshops, four of those. We've had individual stakeholder interviews through cross-section of your staff and your leadership here. We've had school site educational tours, looking at your best practices and the places that are really succeeding and learning from those. We've had a couple of community workshops to receive community feedback. We've had workshops with union leadership, M&amp;O leadership, and we've also had Green Team Student workshops. That was very exciting and very fun. We've sought a collaborative and interconnected approach to your mission, to reaching out to your children, to your community. We've researched your trends. We've researched your goals, your needs. We studied the context of where we learn. We studied the content of what we learn, and we've studied your learning process. And we think that we've captured really the essential ingredients for really 21st century transformational opportunities. The foundation of our metrics have been these pillars of success that are in this slide here. These pillars that came from your strategic plan, the concept of career and college-ready students, family and community engagement, and organizational transformation. And we've measured ourselves in all of our decisions and our process through these metrics. They have been the metrics of our strategic plan. As we've approached the project and the concept of a sustainable master plan, it's been about student-centered education. As we approach social equity, we look at how do we integrate educational vision with the district's strategic plan. We look at 21st education and how national standards are being developed and California standards, and reaching to speak every child in the multiple intelligence that we know that exists. For environmental stewardship, you had a board policy, the Grimes-Kennedy Green and Grid Neutral Model, that has formed the basis of many of the decisions and direction for the plan. It's been a comprehensive review of facilities and developed sustainable standards for design, for maintenance, and for operations. Regarding economic development, we view this as an economic resource management and look for both traditional and alternative funding strategies. We review your facilities as an asset and a strategic tool and a place where we begin to help reduce the general fund expenditures. Frank is going to walk us through a little bit on some of the educational approach, and we'll return and discuss a little bit more detail here.
And in the interest of time, I'll be very brief. As Jordan mentioned, we've done a lot of listening. We've talked to a lot of people. And as we've done so, we have always correlated it with your three pillars. We've organized our work product with reference to the three pillars. This example that's on the slide right now shows H.W. Harkness, shows some very specific ideas about how to improve facilities, to improve learning. But as you can see on the left-hand side, they're all cross-referenced to your three different pillars. In our work, we translated what we heard into facilities by a process that Jordan's already alluded to. I do want to reference that not only were we growing from your successes in the district, we were correlating with national trends, national research successes, and we feel that we've got an approach for facilities that really does support the best that we understand about how to improve learning for students. We took all of that work, which focused on education for most of my time here on the ground, and converted it into facility statements. This is an example of one of the spreadsheets that we developed. We have them for high schools, middle schools, elementary schools. But it gets very specific, room by room, identification of spaces, not only for learning spaces, traditional classrooms, et cetera, but new kinds of learning spaces, active learning spaces. And we'll show you some examples of that in a minute. But beyond that, in terms of making stronger connections to the community, we have parenting centers and health centers, et cetera, at the high schools. So with this, I'll pass it back.
Jordan was mentioning that we had a very extensive site assessment team that was out on all of the 88 school sites and 100 facilities in the district. And the approach that we took was starting out with the end in mind. Your green and grid neutral policy establishes a standard that every building that's designed has a set of qualifications they're going to be able to report to. Well, we said, well, let's start at the, let's bring those requirements at the end and bring them forward to the front. And overlay that metrics and that criteria of the CHIPS program onto your existing facilities to see how we can leverage them. Here's a collection of the sustainable categories that we'll begin to characterize. This begins to identify the opportunities as we see moving forward. These next set of slides are going to begin to show you pictures that exist, the facilities as they sit today. Once again, this is a very high-level, short snapshot. We've got obviously a lot more imagery to begin to show you the needs and the opportunities. So when you looked at sustainable sites, look at John Cabrillo Elementary School is a great case study example of the importance of our neighborhood elementary schools and the ability of creating safe places for arrival and drop-off for students, both from pedestrian standpoint, from a drop-off standpoint, as well as for parking for staff and visitors. Looking at McClatchy High School as an example of their track and field, the importance of looking at surfaces that are meant for both intramural as well as athletics, and creating those facilities to support those programs. Another case in point with AMET. And pick this example because we knew that this is going to become a garden, but there's opportunities of places that traditionally have always been placed as grass that are now being used as learning, outdoor learning opportunities. When you looked at water efficiency, understanding the importance of water as a national resource. Looked at Kit Carson Middle School, the necessity to address code issues as it relates to our drinking fountains. Looking at John F. Kennedy, we've got roof drains and issues that need to be addressed in order to maintain longevity of our roofs, as well looking at urinals and sinks in classrooms. Energy and atmosphere, looking at how do we begin to install systems that are energy-efficient that help to reduce our operating costs, as well as create places that promote teaching and learning. Sequoia Elementary School is a great case in point. They have a conditioned space, but I have to guess that when that AC gets turned on, it's probably tough for students to begin to hear and to be engaged in active learning. Materials and resources, once again, I come back to Health Professions High School and the importance of looking at how to maintain roofs and provide proper slopes and drainage. Looking at our pathways at Crocker Riverside, and that grass and subsurface that's coming through, it should be a pervious surface, as well as looking at Martin Luther King is another situation of roof repair that's needed. And indoor environmental quality, I have to commend the teachers and the staff for really pushing the avenue. And Sutter Middle School is an example of, they're going to chase those data lines out as necessary to make sure they get technology where it's needed. But from a facility standpoint, we could be doing a much better job of bringing the power and the data to them to allow them to do the instruction that they want to provide. And lastly, leadership and education. And at this point, we're starting to turn the corner. As Frank was mentioning, there's some excellent things that are happening in this district. And when we look at your alignment of your strategic plan and how your facilities can support that, there are existing facilities, and case in point, several up here, of where there's active places that students want to learn and want to grow. Our facilities assessment, as an example, this is a school site assessment that was done for every school site. And the beauty about this is, we print one copy, but we actually turn over to you the Excel file. And then an Excel file is intended to be a living document. We begin to identify each of those sustainable categories, when they were last assessed, what's the repair level, what's the category, is it a code item, is it a maintenance item, is it a transformation item, and what's the relative urgency? So as part of our effort, we're going to work with your facilities and maintenance folks to train them the same way that we've trained our folks to instigate and implement these strategies, such that this becomes your living document as you move forward. So when work orders come in, it's integral to this master plan and to these school site assessments. We've then rolled up each of those school site assessments into a cost summary. Each of those cost summaries are broken down by each of the sustainable categories, as well as the notion of the code, the maintenance, and the transformation opportunities. So there's that constant ability to begin to look at opportunities at each school site if we want to affect energy efficiency or water efficiency. We then begin to roll those up, looking from a district level and from a school configuration level at all the elementary, middles, and high schools. And lastly, as we begin to look forward here, there's tremendous opportunity, an opportunity that comes at about a $2.1 billion need. But as we look forward as to how to optimize our facilities and align them most practically with our educational goals, we've got about $2.1 billion to be looking at to achieve those. Now, one thing to mention in this is that if the average facility is over 45 years old in this district, some may say that, okay, well, maybe we should be raising our facilities and moving forward. But of those facilities, there's some strong bones. There's some strong histories, some strong culture to work from. So as we begin to move forward, we have opportunities of not only making our buildings newer, 45-year-old buildings, but tremendous opportunity of actually creating 21st century learning for our students within these facilities. We didn't stop there at the $2.1 billion opportunity. We've begun to look at what additional funding sources exist out there. So we're looking at all avenues of local and state and federal programs. This district right now has $35 million of state eligibility as we currently sit now. Obviously, we need the funds to come from the state to free up for that, but what's there. And there's tremendous opportunity of additional eligibility in the future. Beyond that, as we begin to move forward, we've got a series of case studies. How do you leverage a facility project to have a positive impact on your general fund? Here's a case study from a community center that looked at locating irrigation and lawn where it's most appropriate, an opportunity that, about the size of a middle school, placing grass where it's needed on athletic fields, and then going with drought-tolerant landscaping, about $4,700 annual savings in water just by addressing that. So multiply that by 88. Looking at water efficiency and controls, right now, there's no control system from irrigation. Tremendous opportunity of reducing our bottom line. And historically, we've been able to hit about a 40% reduction on our water bill. Looking at energy and atmosphere, renewable energy. Now, it's important that we take care of the wounds and take care of our facilities first, but then to leverage them and to move that forward. For recent installation down at Napa New Tech, about a 33% offset, about $23,000 annually. First quarter of the year, that 33% offset's actually projecting in the low 40s. So exciting to be seeing the technology. Indoor environmental quality, Laney College just did a lighting upgrade, 31 classrooms, about the size of a middle school, looked at integrating lighting controls, about $44,000 annually just for looking at lighting systems. And lastly, leadership, education, and innovation. By putting students first, I went and looked at the attendance records from an April report from Sac City Unified School District. Extremely impressed with the 96% participation, because that's well above any data that we've seen. And I said, okay, high school's down 1%. So what if, and I'm saying the what if, we actually just push that as a goal that says all grades get 96%. We increase the high school attendance by 1%. We actually create another additional revenue of $478,000 a year. Now, how do we do that? Frank's going to share some case studies, and then we'll get wrapped up.
I just want to share a few highlights of what are built into the facilities proposals of this concept. And I think the bottom line on a lot of this is engagement of students and shift from passive learning to much more active learning. And certainly, as Theodore Judah was cited tonight earlier by a couple of the parents, this is a case study, a very successful school within the district right here. Within the elementaries, we're proposing to convert classrooms from regular classrooms into project labs and being able to have them as active learning spaces for both science and art. We have two per building, upper and lower schools, in the elementary. At middle schools, we learned a lot in talking to community members, and the idea is that media centers are important for schools, but they're also important for community, particularly the computer aspects of them. And so this concept here shows how to position them at the joint between community use and school use. And not only is it a technology center, media center, but also ties into the parenting center. The circular building is probably the iconic feature of about five of your middle schools. And then at the high school level, this example from Hyrum Johnson shows conversion of, you know, the 50-year-old classrooms into much more active learning spaces, this one for the technology and engineering design component. This is one of the pathways. You can see here, well, actually, I'm going to blow them up here, enlargement of conversion of regular classroom spaces into much more active learning labs for increased student engagement and, in this case, a focus within the intent of the different pathways.
So in closing and also introductions, we've designed a 21st century framework to really approach the challenges of our era. And we think this is an opportunity for you to really view your facilities as a capital asset, to view your facilities as a strategic tool, and to really seek all available funding strategies. On the heels of a discussion of these great budget cuts, we see opportunity here to really help the bottom line and really improve student performance. We see this as not an end of a process, but the beginning of perhaps new directions. Tonight, we have also here Larry Tramatola, who is going to come up and speak to some of the funding, financial strategies.
So I know that I have 20 seconds to talk about the bond measure. I'll do it quick. Now, first, I want to just thank you for a pretty inspiring evening and a sobering evening as well. You all as board members have difficult jobs to deal with the current, thank you, to deal with the current problems that you're addressing, but also trying to look long-term and trying to be visionary. It is a difficult job in every community, and it's a difficult one in this one. So I want to thank each and every one of you for what you do. Our, I guess I can do this, our, there are some slides, but our assignment was to assess the feasibility of both a bond measure and a partial tax to benefit the Sacramento City schools. And what I want to do, and I think the slide will probably come up in a second, but let me just share with you a little bit, for those who aren't aware, the difference of a bond measure and a partial tax. A partial tax is an assessment on every parcel in the district that's a taxable parcel. The money for that can be used to supplement the general fund, and it can be used for any purpose, whether it be class size reduction, a lot of the different problems you identified earlier. The district gets the money yearly as taxpayers pay, and it's not based on the value of someone's home, it's based on a flat rate, typically a flat rate per parcel. There's no cap on the amount of money, other than a political cap in terms of what voters would be willing to do. You can have a citizen's, you can have a senior exemption, and it can be on the ballot almost at any time. I believe that a partial tax is somewhere in the future for the district. Am I doing this? And I'll talk about that in a minute. A bond measure, on the other hand, is limited to funding facilities, equipment, and technology. It can't be used for salaries, it can't be used for ongoing operations. The district gets the money upfront, and taxpayers pay a debt over time. Bonds are sold, that's why it's called bond measures. The tax is based on the assessed value of the property, so based on what your home is assessed for, you pay that amount, and it varies from taxpayer to taxpayer. Under Prop 39, you have some legal limits. For a K-12 district, as yours, the maximum you can go is $60 per $100,000 of each bond measure. There's a mandatory requirement for a citizens oversight committee, you can't exempt seniors, and you have to be on a regularly scheduled ballot. In terms of a Prop 39 bond, it requires a 55% approval rate by voters, and of course, a partial tax requires the 66.7% approval rate. We tested both of these in the fall of 2011, and these were the top features of the partial tax. The top one, and we usually look at somewhat, or the support are much more positive and somewhat more positive, to get what your normal number would be or what your prediction would be. Keep school libraries open, virtually every single person in this district thought that that was a priority, 91%. Provide advanced academic programs in math, science, and technology, 89%. Keep textbooks, instructional materials up to date, 88%. Continue funding art and music programs, 88%. Attract and retain the most qualified teachers and support staff, 87%. Manageable class sizes, 87%. Provide advanced educational programs that help students get into the best colleges, 87%. You cannot get numbers much better than that in terms of what the programs are. In terms of the bond results, the priorities were upgrade aging science labs and equipment, and I'm summarizing some of the questions. Providing facilities and equipment for career technical education classes so students compete for high-demand jobs, 88%. The repair and replacing of worn-out roofs, floors, walkways, lighting, electrical systems, 88%. Upgrade classrooms and computer systems to keep pace with technology, 86%. Improve safety and security systems, security, lighting, fencing, smoke detectors, et cetera, 84%. Heating, ventilation, insulation, doors, windows, so forth, 85%. Again, we very seldom see numbers better than that in terms of priorities. Now, we polled on the partial tax varying levels from at a high of $98 to $48. The number I'm looking, the number that you see there on the partial tax at $48 per parcel were the support levels by district. So you can see in the trusty areas, 1 through 7, the support level for the partial tax in each one of those areas. And remember, it requires 2/3, 67%, and we look at the bond level of support in each one of these district areas, now requiring 55%. So overall, interesting, both 71%, but the partial tax required 2/3, 67%, and the bond at 55%. One of the challenges in terms of the partial tax short term, and I do believe, as I've said before, is that I believe a partial tax is in future for the district, the question is when. Terms of the short-term challenges, obviously, it requires two through support. Fundraising for a campaign for a partial tax is challenging, but for this election for November, there was a lot of concern that there's confusion and competition with the statewide tax measures. In fact, many of the statewide organizations from the teachers and the others felt that they're trying to discourage partial taxes to be on the November ballot because of the confusion and competition. Because basically, you're having to say that our local measure, which requires 2/3, is needed, and at the statewide level, they're going to say the problems are going to be answered by passage of the statewide measures. We can discuss that. As you know, and as we have heard, the district has identified 2.1 billion in district improvements. I have described it many ways, is that it's kind of a watermelon, and no one of my staff could figure out how to do a watermelon on this PowerPoint, so they created a vessel. And the challenge is, is that while there's $2.1 billion of need or opportunities, our ability to approach taking a bite out of that is difficult, and let me explain why. There are legal limits. There are legal limits of what we can ask voters to support. As I mentioned earlier, the legal limit is $60, maximum of $60 per 100,000 of assessed valuation. There are also political considerations. While you may be able to assess people at $60 per 100,000, they may not support you at $60 per 100,000. So there's legal limits and then political considerations, what voters are willing to pay. And there are also considerations about our ability to leverage other funds. In everything we've tried to do, we've tried to figure out a way that you could leverage additional funds, either state funds or through savings, to be able to expand what you can do. In terms of the tax rate, the tax rate that we polled that seemed to be doable, meaning it could be over the 55%, was about a $44 tax rate per 100,000 of assessed valuation. That generates about $335 million plus or minus. It's not exact, because it's depending on when you draw down that money, but it's about 335 million. Now, you have to put that in context with the $2.1 billion of needs. This is not the last bond measure this district will... This is not the last bond measure this district will need to do or will do, and so how one applies the $355 million, assuming it would be passed, to your overall needs, is some of the difficult decisions that have to be made. So the guiding principles that we tried to look at that are not only, well, the guiding principles were a bond measure that would have, that would benefit the most students in the district, that would have a transformational impact, that would yield savings from decreased energy and water usage and provide savings to the general fund that could help other district needs. Projects that would not have to be redone in future years, so that we weren't doing something and then five years later have to redo it because we had changed our vision. Projects that would also qualify the district for state matching funds and also could be completed on time and hopefully under budget to improve our ability to pass future measures. And I say that because I think that there is a, if we're going to come close to addressing needs in the future, there is going to have to be future bond measures and we're going to have to live, we're going to have, the future bond measures will rest on our ability to perform on this one. So we have created various options. I mean, there are an infinite number of options, but we tried to boil down into three primary options, all of which are reasonable, but they have various trade-offs. The total amounts of money are not different, but what you do with the money is a bit different. So first is option 1A, and when I say that, there is an option 1B, a companion measure that we're looking together. So option 1A, we call it the educational facilities bond. What this does is it does the core academic improvements at the high school and selected middle schools. It does fire safety improvements at all of the schools throughout the district. It provides renewable energy and water conservation system at the large facilities to reduce energy and water costs, and it creates a maintenance fund for ongoing maintenance and operations. And it provides technology improvements at all the schools. The package of that is about $336 million. We also knew that having spoken to all the various schools, there were needs that they articulated that would not be addressed by that bond, and that makes sense with $2.1 billion worth of needs. If you're looking at 17% of it, something gets cut out. So we looked at possibly putting on what we'd call a health and safety bond. And to address the needs that have been identified at each school, we're recommending this companion measure, which if you looked at the primary bond costing voters about $44 per 100,000, this would cost about $9 per 100,000. So it's almost like saying, this is our primary need, but if you were so generous, these are the other things that we would like to do. We didn't want it to compete with the primary bond. This companion bond would cover the following. Repair of playgrounds and playfields to meet modern safety standards, improve physical education facilities and bathrooms, and upgrade kitchen facilities to improve nutrition and nutrition education. Now, the advantages of these two bonds, well, we'll call them two bonds, 1A and 1B, would address about 400 million of your needs. They address all the schools in all areas of the district. It builds upon the district's strategic and master plan goals. It has significant money set aside for ongoing maintenance. There are possible state matching funds, and when we say possible, it's because you have projects that are approved, but there's not state funding for those. But once the state funding comes, we get possible state matching funds. They address voter priorities, provides flexibility for the future, provides relief to the general fund, every child in the district would benefit, and a second bond would not negatively affect the primary bond. In terms of disadvantages, the cumulative tax rate is at the upper limit, and it's a 10-year program, so you're not going to see immediate change overnight in all the places. It's going to be a program that's going to take some years to do, but that's true for virtually every one of these programs. So then we looked at it a different way. Okay, option 2. Now, option 2 is very similar to the bond measure that you did in previous years and candidly, what many districts around the state does. Rather than working on projects that have a transformational impact, as you've identified as your priority goals, the money would be spent on projects throughout the district based on current need. These projects would include code and life safety improvements throughout the district, repair and renovate, replace worn-out roofs, floors, walkways, lighting, and electrical. Did I, and I think that was, that was it. It's, your needs there are at about, let me guess, in that category of things, $300 million plus, $100 million for code and life safety improvements, ADA compliance, pathways and lighting, and about 250 of the 410 million total to renovate and replace roofs, floors, walkways, lighting, and electrical systems. So the advantages to that is every school potentially gets something. It'll address the most pressing needs of each school, we get possible state matching funds, and it's basically what the district did last time. The disadvantages are it ignores the district's strategic and master plan goals, it does not address significant transformational issues, there's a great likelihood that projects will be, need to be redone in future years, it does not address potential school closures, if that's in the future for some schools. Again, at best, some work would take 10 years for some schools to see any results. We believe it's a little bang for the buck. Future support for an additional bond may be questionable. There's no ongoing maintenance fund in it, and it's basically what the district did last time. It sounds, I guess I was going off on the disadvantages of that, but you can see where I'm going on this. So we presented a third of hybrid. Now, the hybrid is a little, it's different. While we looked at schools in each district, the group of schools could be determined or modified. These are examples of what would be included. These are transformational projects within each district. So each district would have a transformational school, and some of them it could be a K-8 school, and others it would be a high school, and others would be a middle school. It would, they would address ongoing maintenance operation funds, as did the, as did 1A, technology improvements at all schools. We would also recommend, if you chose option 3A, to do a companion measure that would provide some of these, maybe not all, and renewable energy and water conservation systems at large facilities to reduce energy and water costs, fire safety issues at all schools, as well as kitchen facilities. Not sure that 60 million could cover all of this, so there'd have to be some things taken out. So there are the advantages and disadvantages. The advantages, like the first one, addresses about $400 million of needs, it builds upon the district's strategic and master plan goals, has significant money set aside for ongoing maintenance, possible state matching funds, provides some relief to the general fund, and major improvements at the targeted schools. The disadvantages is that I believe there are winners and losers throughout the district. Some schools would get a lot, some schools would get not much. Some children will go through the system without receiving any of the benefits of this bond. The decision at what schools becomes more political, and it's not necessary in alignment with poll results. I believe it's harder to pass. And a supplemental bond structured like this, I think, could compete with a primary bond, which would be a disadvantage because you don't want people to support the supplemental bond and not pass the primary bond. So our recommendation, and I drew this again because it shows you still the unfunded needs. But, so bond A, so we look at that 1A, the 3, about a $336 million bond to do the transformational projects at the high schools and the middle schools and the other programs. A supplemental bond B that would be able to touch all the schools and many of their needs in terms of the playgrounds and play areas for children. And then on both of these, there would, there would be matching funds. So those would be our recommendations. Obviously, there are a myriad of changes there, and so why don't I pause here and then either answer questions concerning the politics of it, or my colleagues can answer questions in terms of the facility plan.
Okay. So I'm going to assume that both of you are done with your presentations at this moment, and we'll go with public comment, and then we'll come back and ask questions. Mr. Gay Russ.
We have four public comments on this item, from Kent Jolly, Richard Markson, Matt Kelly,
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent. I'm Dr. Kent Jolly, and my son Christopher is a child at West Campus High School. I'm here tonight to represent the West Campus Parents Liaison Committee to express our support for a school bond measure that would revitalize our children's school. As you know, the U.S. News &amp; World report has ranked West Campus academically as the top school in any local district. It's also in the top 100 in this state and the top 500 nationally. It is the only local school to achieve anywhere near this ranking. Yet, as it was agreed last fall in this very room, the West Campus facility is so unsatisfactory that no other program could be asked to move there. The West Campus students deserve better. They deserve an academic environment that would foster better performance, and I think those students are capable of it. The current physical plant interferes, the air conditioning interferes with lectures, the IT system is second-rate at best, and the physical plant is such an embarrassment that many students and parents decide not to send their children there after a simple drive-by. Although West Campus has all these deficiencies, we think that if it was appropriately supported by a bond measure such as you're considering tonight, that it could be made into a campus that would excel its academic performance even greater. And so we would hope that a bond measure is pursued this fall, and that if West Campus were likely to benefit from it, that although the campus is in Area 4, it draws students from every area, and that you could count on support of parents throughout the district.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent and staff. I'm Richard Markson. I'm here on behalf of about 1,000 apprentices. Those are young men and women here in the Sacramento Valley who are learning the construction trades, none of whom can actually work on any of the district's projects right now because of your decision, previous board's decision to implement a project labor agreement. And we would encourage you, one of your challenges will be to reassure the voters in the area that you are good custodians for their money in the event that you decide to go with a bond measure or a parcel tax, that you are spending their money well. National University recently released a study that indicates that school construction, after analyzing more than 500 school projects here in California, the districts that build under a PLA spend between 15 and 20% more for comparable construction than they do under a fair and open competition scenario. So what we would do on behalf of the apprentices and contractors and journey workers here in California that would like to work on you and would like to support your construction objectives, that you reject your current project labor agreement, that you adopt as part of whatever the measure is that you choose to present to the voters, a fair and open competition element in it that assures that every contractor, every apprentice, and every journey worker in the Sacramento area has an opportunity to work on your projects, that you would adopt that in your operative documents so that you reassure voters who will be making the decision whether to vote yes or no on these measures, that you are good shepherds of their money. Because unfortunately, we believe that based upon the research, that if you don't do something like that, voters will reject any new capital outlay plan for you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Matt Kelly with the Sacramento Building and Construction Trades Council. Good evening, board members, Mr. Raymond. I would urge you to consider what you just heard as nonsense, and what they will do is they will threaten you with going against your bond if you don't, you know, bow to their pressure. So I'm sorry that, I'm sorry that you had to deal with that. Union contractors and non-union contractors are alike, alike are allowed to bid on these projects under the agreement that you have adopted. So to listen to something like that, I apologize for you having to do that. Since you began to put this facilities master plan together, we have been very interested in it at the building trades. We understand that the bond measure supports this and will move forward, and we encourage you to adopt your facilities master plan. You've got a lot invested in it, you've got staff that has put many, many, many hours of work into it. This will create jobs, put the people that I represent to work, and many of those individuals that I represent, many of the local union members, have children that attend the facilities at Sac City Unified School District, and so they will benefit in that respect. They are also, of course, taxpayers in this district, and I'm sure that they would strongly support any bond measure that you would try to put up in November, and we would encourage you to move forward with this. Thank you very much.
Darlene Anderson, I find it interesting that we talked about social equity in this presentation simply because the majority of kids that attend this district are kids in poverty, and they're not benefiting like certain kids. And because this district does concap children, it looks like, concapping looks like Camellia Basic, kind of like five kindergarten classes, two first-grade classes, and none of the kindergartners that go to the five kindergarten classes ever get to attend Camellia Basic, little or very few. But I understand that they've kept that practice up, and some people would say that it would benefit those children by having the ability to come into the neighborhood and get a better education, but the problem is, is that it disallows those parents to participate. So from the John Street, they are behind because their parents are not learning the importance of participating in the public education system. But it really depends on what you see as revenue and who you see as being entitled to be utilized as revenue. And since the practice of concapping has not benefited the district over the years, I would think that the district would think about changing the practice because it really is hurting Sacramento in the long run. In the long run, when you don't engage kids in poverty in the public education system, they merely just drop out or find it not interesting or not willing to. And then you have some that are really striving to try to engage but are finding difficulty because of the tolerance issues, and there are many tolerance issues in the district. And overall, when we pay contractors to come in and take a look, they can see the inequities, but they really don't understand all the problems that are behind those inequities. And as long as kids are revenue and they're being shifted around by administrative choice, it is a problem in this district.
We have no further public comment. We will go with Board Member Terry. Throwing me off today, you're in the wrong seat. I said you're throwing me off, you're in the wrong seat.
Let's see where to start. Most of my questions are for you. And I appreciate the facilities plan, and I'm still digesting what I've heard of the last week or so on it. But a couple of quick questions about option 1, 2, and 3, I think is how we're describing them, right? Because, and I guess it depends on what neighborhoods we're all Because, and I guess it depends on what neighborhoods we're all talking to and what I hear, but your description of how we did the bond the last, or how this district did the bond the last time, I'm not sure if that was a really fair description of it, saying that, you know, they just kind of went out and they built and did renovation projects and some other things, because they also built four new high schools at least, if I'm counting right, maybe five. And, you know, to look at even option 3A on this, it's heavy on the high school side, the high schools that didn't get a lot of the bond money the last time. But you have Science and Engineering, New Tech, George Washington Carver, Rosemont, that were all built, and Health Professions, I might be missing one there, too. And I get your point that in certain ways, the first option will touch most all students because they're going to travel through a high school class at some point if we're addressing it that way. But, I mean, because my goal is that I want this thing to pass, and my concern is, and I've told you this before, and I'll just be frank, is that for my constituents, you know, an option 3A to me seems a lot more likely to get through than some of the other ones. And if we look at the polling that you did, and I think depending on what you offer to them, you can also see that in trustee area 3, that's consistently the lowest one when it came to the parcel tax, and it's darn near the lowest one when it comes to the bond. And if it was focused around high schools, I would have serious concerns about not getting to that threshold. And whether that means addressing a specific project at, say, Einstein or some of the other elementary schools in the area that I think could really use the upgrades. I mean, in some of the schools, you know, they're basically portables, and their multipurpose rooms are not adequate for what they're needing to serve. In some instances, you know, we've talked about school closures and the capacity to serve certain students, and you'd have three or four lunch periods just to get enough kids through. And so even looking at things like that, and I don't know if that's a way to sell it, but to me, I have serious concerns, and I agree. I personally like option 1 a lot more, but I'm concerned that, you know, I want what's most likely to appeal to the voters because either way, like you said, we have $2.1 billion worth of expenditures that we need to make, and I want to make sure that we get what we can this time. And I have serious reservations about the, how much this would appeal to my trustee area. And I'm not sure, I'm assuming that this isn't how the math was done, but, you know, a very large percentage of the vote is in my neighborhoods or in my trustee area comparatively to the other ones. So I have serious concerns, and I don't know if you'd like to...
Yeah, first, I was not trying to cast aspersions on previous bond measures. I'm just saying that one of the things that, what you all have done as a district, I find in having done almost 300 tax election, has been quite unique, which is develop a serious facility plan to try to address your needs irrespective of political consideration, just saying, okay, what is in the best interest of children? What's in the best interest of this community? And for me, that has been a great process to watch it take place and to see that happen. And a few districts, when they put a bond measure on the ballot, have the data and the information that you have, and so I want to commend you for that. And the reality is, a lot of times, bond measures are slapped together as saying, okay, what do voters support? Let's put that on the ballot, and then we'll do that. What you're trying to do is say, okay, what will be transformative here? So whether it's you 10 years from now or future boards 10 years from now, we'll say we made steps to reach those goals. Now, in doing that, I would not describe option 1 as a high school bond. Now, there are things in there that clearly are high school-related because that's where most of the children eventually move to, but in areas where a high school is done, there are opportunities for Einstein and other, Carson and other places to be able to do some dramatic things. One of the things we tried not to do, though, was trying to say, okay, let's just take what money there and just divide it up as you're dividing up a pork chop among six children. You don't do that. You were trying to say, okay, what is the best way to do this? And I think there is flexibility to be able to do that in all the options. But I think the option 1, from our perspective, is the one that does more of the transformational things, and I believe in the end, people will be supportive of this. We have, poll numbers are supportive. It's going to take a tremendous campaign, but I do think that there, I think on all these measures, we could be supportive. I think there are, our challenge with some of them, as I have mentioned, even though option 3 has the two-bond concept, I'm a little concerned with it because of the competition with the primary bond, which I don't see in this one. And so, yeah.
And I agree with you that, that's a concern of mine in 3A. So, and maybe it's just how the slide was laid out that, so in option 1A, we would still, taking Rosemont for instance, where it has a new comprehensive high school, it has a new small high school, it would be laid out to voters that the signature project would be an Einstein or something else.
Correct.
So that, it would still have that element that it does in 3A, if I'm understanding. Okay, so I didn't get that from the first one.
Right.
It does say selected middle schools. I guess I'll write Einstein to remind myself.
Okay.
But I think that's going to be really critical, I think, for our neighborhoods, simply because, you know, I mean, when I was walking my neighborhoods when I was running for office, the things that came out of people's mouth were, you know, we finally liked this school district again because they finally built our high school after 40 years. And that's, I think, our neighborhoods were the main reason that the two bonds failed in a row, and until there was a commitment to building that high school. But now, you know, to go back to them and say, it's time to pony up again, I think it's only fair to find those projects that are going to impact their kids.
Yeah, you know, you would like to think, you would like to think that voters would look at the broad needs. And unfortunately, people are very parochial, and they do look at local needs. I mean, I've even done bonds in school districts where they had three schools, three schools, and people were looking at what's going to happen at my school. Now, you could throw a rock and hit all three schools. So it's human nature. That's okay.
Well, in certain neighborhoods, I mean, and again, kind of getting back to, when I ran for school board and being the first school board member ever to live in that neighborhood and ever run for that neighborhood, I would tell you that 50% or more of the people that I met weren't aware what school district they lived in. Because 90% of my constituents don't live in the city of Sacramento. And so when you'd go and you'd talk to them and say, I'm running for school board, I'm running for Sac City School Board, they're like, I can't vote for you. I don't live in the city. So unless you had children in the district, so what I'm saying, too, is that it's not just an appeal to the schools, there's literally a huge amount of the population. I live in the county, I live in Ranch Cardova. I can't vote for this, or this isn't part of... So the disconnect there between those two things, I think, are really critical to understanding, I think, the neighborhoods that I represent. But having said that, I think I, from getting your, you answered my questions, I think option 1A is obviously the best. I think it gives the most tools to the superintendent to address the things that we want to do and aspire to do in this district. So, thank you.
Member Terry, I've been with Kennedy, please.
Thank you. First of all, I've said it at, you know, community meetings, and I've said it in, you know, closed session, but, so I want to say it publicly to the NTD and the Cummings team that, you know, the work that you have done is phenomenal as far as, I mean, you didn't just go out there and address facilities issues, you addressed, as you said, the equity side. You linked it all to our strategic plan. I've never seen such a comprehensive plan before. And, you know, as a kind of a planning wonky geek, this is exciting as hell to me. So, you know, well done. On the, as far as the different choices, I think that it doesn't take long to just say that we really only have two choices, you know, that number two is really, you know, some of the things that we have to have in when we go forward, in my opinion, is the transformative nature of it so that we're doing something here that is really, you know, forward-thinking, and we're not just patching leaky roofs. Leaky roofs need patching, obviously, but I think that we need to be bolder here, and this does that. I particularly think 1 does it. But the other thing is also the renewable energy component of it. That's not just about renewable energy and feeling good and green, although that's extremely important, reducing our carbon footprint as a school district and teaching our kids how to do that, and having them a part of it like we did in the Green Team recently, all of those things that this district's doing, I think we're leading the way, we're cutting edge, are important. But just as important is the general fund savings that we will recognize, we will realize from this. I mean, I've looked at the numbers, and if you look at the lifetime of the bond, this bond will save general fund dollars more than a parcel tax would because of the short duration of the parcel tax and the amount of money. So, you know, we're getting a parcel tax as a freebie if we go forward with this as a bond, and I think that that's extremely important. We need to keep that in mind. So, you know, again, you know, great work. And at this point, what's the process from the board's side?
First, give direction to us in terms of which direction you want to go. We then will craft the ballot language for one or both. You will be able to modify that ballot language, adjust it, whatever, we'll give you recommended language. There'll be a resolution, and a tax rate statement that will go along. Everything has to be completed legally by August 10th, so we have a bit of time to be able to adjust, to modify the program. And so we have to just get everything done by August 10th. So, assuming you will have the 75-word ballot statement, so if there's two bonds, there's two 75-word ballot statements, two tax rate statements, and two resolutions spelling out in general terms the projects that you're going to, that you are funding.
So tonight, are you, I mean, are you asking for us to give direction on one of these options?
It would be helpful. It would be extremely helpful.
And one more thing that I was remiss, I forgot to mention, as far as the whole plan goes, and doing this in a way that we're not creating binders that are going to sit on a desk someplace and we'll never see them again, the living document and the fact that the training went with it, and it was so thorough. I served on the bond oversight committee for the last bonds. If we had had this kind of planning, if we had had this kind of foresight, we would have saved millions and millions of dollars, in my opinion. So I think that this board can feel like, you know, we're being good stewards of the public trust. Thank you.
Vice President Cunha.
Thank you. I just first wanted to comment on the, I've been able to look through a little bit of the facilities plan that you put together, and it is impressive, and I thank you for the work. So, you know, I was skeptical of the plan at first, actually, just before you came on, of spending the money for it. Still skeptical someone on the money side, but I'm extremely pleased with the results, and I can say that with confidence. On the second issue is obviously, where's the money going to go, and what are we going to put forth to the voters? So I just, I do have some questions. We seem to be linking transformational to one plan, and I was wondering why that adjective is being used for that one plan and not the others. And I'll ask a follow-up after that.
I think transformational could be used in either option number one or option number three, to be fair and to be honest. I think it's just a different way of doing it. I don't think option 2 is transformational, and as trustee Kennedy said, there may be only two real options. But I think they both, they both are directed toward your district goals and your master plan. So I think they both deal with that.
Have there been any discussions or thought around a transformational plan for elementary schools?
You could speak to that.
Yes, I think the Plan 1 has potential to do some elementary school transformational projects and still touch the primary high school components. Not comprehensive, but there are some opportunities to look at some of the strong needs such as project labs on the high schools and parent centers. There's such a broad depth of elementary schools versus high school that it's a much bigger watermelon to bite than the high schools. Yes, there could be some integration of that. And actually, the, one of the original concepts we looked at was to touch all of the high school, all the comprehensive high schools completely in once and for all for the next, you know, many decades, but trying to get, plant a seed in each of the elementary schools, and there was a little bit that could be done there.
So I guess I'm hearing there was no actual, no specific discussion on if we were going to spend 300-plus million on just elementary schools, what that would look like, and what the goal of transformation...
You could not do, you could not touch every elementary school comprehensively. You could touch a section of them, and you could choose to go sort of from the bottom up versus the other direction, but you would not be able to affect every elementary school in a comprehensive transformational change.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you. So I guess like member Terry, selected middle schools, would one of those schools be Kit Carson in the 1A option? Another question I have is more technical. How can we use these monies on technology? Is there limits or, like, I'm talking specific district kind of wide technology, and I can be even more specific if you want. I'm wondering how, how much can be spent on that, or can we spend money on that in a bond?
You can. I mean, it's, technology is one of those things, in fact, it was laid out when we passed Proposition 39, that technology was one of the priorities. There were, if you read the original language of Prop. 39, they had some goals. One was to, one was technology, the other one ironically was class size reduction. But, so facilities for class size reduction, but of course, we don't have money to pay for the teachers. But, no, technology is specifically spelled out in Prop. 39.
Okay. And, you know, one of my priorities here has been, since I was elected, that we, we work on our infrastructure, our technological infrastructure, our ability to keep track of children throughout the district, across schools, to measure them on a number of different levels, attendance, suspension expulsions, grades, test scores, both internal and external, and that we have the ability to spend money in that area. We haven't done that so far, and my point is, we're never going to get to a point where we can have coherence throughout our system and our teaching and learning processes until we can figure out where our kids are at in our classrooms. And I'm a strong proponent of infrastructure spending in that regard, towards student achievement. Whether that'll be in one of the options, I'm not sure, but it's been a priority for me since I got here. I think as a district, we're going to be stuck until we move forward in this regard because until we can give the teachers in the classroom the tools to differentiate their learning and understand how their students, where their students are when they enter the classroom, and then also when they jump from 8th grade to 9th or 6th to 7th, that there's some coherence between that jump. And especially, we have a very transient population, so when kids move across town, we can pick them up because we have an intelligible technological system that can be accessed by all of our school sites. So that's a priority for me moving forward. And I guess, I guess for, for me, right now, where I'm at is this, I haven't had a chance to look at any of the, any of the documents yet, and I can't in good conscience ask my constituents to vote for something that I haven't reviewed. I will come to my own conclusions about the intelligibility of the bond issue and whether or not it's a good thing for the community that I serve and the district that I represent. But I will do that after a thorough vetting of the planning document, and I'm looking forward to a good discussion in July about where we're at and where the bond should go.
Superintendent Raymond.
Thanks, President Rodriguez. I just wanted to respond with a little bit of...
bit of specificity around the, the technology infrastructure pieces. When we reprogrammed some of the, the last remaining bond funds, about $500,000, it was designed to help begin the basis of our technology plan here at the district, which is to put in place an infrastructure which allows for a 21st century platform. We are able to be, to start that process here at the Center Center, to have the kinds of, of, not only broadband, but the, the, but the, the platform in which to then support every, every one of our school sites and facilities. We've, we've been able to extend it out to, to two middle schools in a pilot process. California Middle and, and Rosa Parks also got the similar infrastructure tools, the, the switches, the, the, the platform, the networks, in order for them to, to support the kind of technology infrastructure that you're talking about. Yeah.
Is more money needed to bring that up to speed and implement it throughout the district?
It, it is. And, and then, so we were, we were able to take a little more, a little more funding and provide a, the initial match to an E-rate, which is a federal government highly subsidized opportunity to outfit schools with technology that are in high poverty areas. The E-rate, in short, is based upon poverty levels. And we were able to file an E-rate application with enough bond matching money to look at about 20 or so schools. So, that, so the plan, which involves, it's a five-year, about a $16 million infrastructure technology investment, which would enable us to leverage all remaining E-rate funds to, in essence, provide those network and infrastructure tools to every one of our school sites and facilities. The one thing that the bond monies can't pay for, with, with very few exception, are things like these things, you know, these little iPads and, and devices. But it, it can pay for all of the hardware, all of the networks, all of the infrastructure, switches, cabling. It can even pay for things like student information systems, which there's been some talk of with our provider, for this angle system, in essence, going into bankruptcy. You know, that's an area of infrastructure that we will have to reinvest in. And a lot of the performance management tools that, that you're referring to, the ability to have dashboards, the ability to provide on-time, real-time data to all of our systems and all of our teachers and educators within the system. You know, those are things that we can look at being supported, you know, with this technology investment. And all of the options that we are looking at would, would cover that sufficient technology infrastructure investment. The five-year is, is about $16 million in, in current day dollars.
I guess the last request is, if we're gonna come back in July, and I can give feedback along the way, too. I'm, I'm not looking to surprise anybody in July. Once I read over things, I can give opinions. But if we can have some specifics, too, because right now, we have core academic improvement, it's the high schools and selected middle schools. And like Mr. Terry, I had the same question, which ones are we selecting? So, thanks.
Member Kennedy?
That, you know, in just a few words, you said what I was gonna say, and that's that, you know, I, I would like to see us, you know, go forward with the idea that we're looking at option A at this point because of, it seemed to touch the technology, the energy efficiency, the core academic improvements, and that, but that the staff and consultants work with the board between now and the next meeting to further flesh out and give us more information and what those vague statements mean specifically. You know, I'd be very comfortable with that.
Thank you. So, it's my turn. I get to ask questions. I'm always last. I have a lot of questions. So, and unfortunately, we didn't get this in advance, so we could ask these questions in advance. So, forgive me. Let's see here. So, I just have one for, about social equity and the triple bottom line. I don't know who wants to answer that. So, in, in looking at the criticisms of the triple bottom line, one of the criticisms was exactly what we had, one of our public comment persons talk about, is, is the social equity. You know, I mean, there's this need for everyone to want certain areas of our society to look like other areas of their society versus that society. So, how are we addressing that in this? Are we being completely sensitive to areas, or are we just kind of imposing a particular ideal on different areas of our community and what makes up Sac City Unified? I mean, how are we addressing the social inequity or social equities that we have?
Yes, we, we did reach out, and we, we worked with the community support, conducted several community outreach programs, and also worked at the site level, at each school at the site level, to receive their feedback, to find out what was unique with them. We did some demographic analysis also, looked at the cultural diversity in, in the region, looked at the historical diversity, and how the regions have grown and what the influences were. And we found a number of common themes that were coming up in, in, in areas of support. To address social equity, there's a common theme for wanting stronger parental engagement, stronger community facilities, more of a 24/7 type of environment. There's a need for parents to be able to come and address technology and other components and things. They want to be a part of the education. And we see transformational type of facilities such as technology media centers that don't just speak to the daytime activities, but open themselves up in the evenings for parents and community to engage. And we found quite a few common themes that, that were going on there. And coincidentally, as you saw in the polling, a lot of the same things that we were discovering, Larry was discovering in the, in the polling out there. So, it's, we're trying to find that balance. And of course, educationally, we know that not everybody learns the same. We have multiple intelligence, and there are different ways that we learn. And so, we're following a lot of the pathways and the concepts that you have educationally that speak to the cultural diversity of different learning styles. And so, we're incorporating transformational changes in the classroom to identify more active learning, laboratory settings. At the elementary school, we know that science is an important, and art's an important factor. So, we're, we're trying to reach a broad section of, of tools to help engage the social equity.
Thank you. Okay, so now I want to talk about the technology piece, since it's part of the recent conversation that we were just having. I hear a lot of discussion on hardware, in terms of technology, but not the software component. And I believe somebody said that we could use these funds for software-type program upgrades.
Politically and legally, you can. You can use, you can use your, your bond proceeds for both hardware and software technological upgrades.
And were software upgrades polled for when you did your polling?
You know, usually, you'd, most people don't understand the difference between hardware and software. It was more of a package of, of technology upgrades. And technology upgrades were, were popular here, as it, as they are in virtually every school district around the state. People get that there, the world is changing, and for kids to be able to adapt to the changing world, they need to not only be comfortable with technology, there needs to be technological improvements in the school district. So, we're very solid on that one.
I, I'm just going back to, and it's unfortunate that we have a few board members up here that don't, haven't been with this current board for the entire four years, but we have had surveys done or audits done on our systems. For example, our HR and payroll systems are pretty antiquated, and we need software upgrades, like five, 10 years ago on these systems. And it, just alluding exactly what Vice President Cunio was talking about, tracking systems and students. And, I mean, we can do all the build-it improvements, but if we don't have the systems to ensure that we get the 1% increase in our student population, then, you know, we're only as good as what we have. So, I'd like to just bring that to the attention, that we need to have that as part of our plan, software upgrades as well. I don't know if we can incorporate that from now until a couple of weeks from now. Going to the bond poll results, I see that we have the top five features in the facilities. With, how many features were polled on, and was there a top 10, or why did you decide to just come forward with five?
Well, you mean in terms of the presentation tonight?
Mm-hmm.
We could give you the whole, that poll was done in last November. One of the things what we are planning to do is to test, depending on the direction that you give us, we want to do a tracking poll on these concepts to also say if they are as popular as they were back in, back in November. And so, what we did in terms of the presentation tonight, rather than giving you the whole, taking 20 minutes and going over survey results, is giving you the top measures, more, more to illustrate that the fact that this community is very supportive of what you're trying to do, both on a parcel tax and a bond, is more for illustrative purposes, more than anything else for tonight. But our plan is, is to, assuming there's, it's a general direction of what you want to do tonight, go back and do a tracking poll to see if, if we are still at the, the level we think we will be at.
That answers all my other questions on polls, because, you know, one question, I know that, you know, with the percentage of the past points are based on the number of voters that come out to vote.
Mm-hmm.
And, and who supports, not supports. But by chance, did you poll on enthusiasm to come out to the polls and vote?
Well, what we do is that, you know, voting is a, is a habit, and it's very hard to change someone's habit on anything. And so, what we did is we polled that are people that are likely to vote in the November election, but also looked at subsets of people that would vote in a special election or a lower turnout election. For this district, you are always better off of going in a higher turnout election, of which this November will be. Now, I can't assess whether people are gonna enthusiastically vote this November or unenthusiastically vote. I know that they will vote, and voter turnout will be high. I mean, you, you, we just went through a June election, which was terribly low. Would we have won in that election? Perhaps not. The, the November election is gonna be a much higher election, and your chances are better in a higher, in a higher election. It's not, this is not unusual, but given the demographics in this community, as others, we can predict that.
So, now I want to talk about the different options. First of all, I want to thank you so much. I wish all of our decisions had options, one, two, and three. And I want to thank you very much.
Well, that's only because your board asked for them. I, I would like to not take credit for that, but it was because your board asked for options, and I think it was wise.
Believe me, we asked for them, and, and I love, I love that you deliver. So, I want to talk about the option 1A, 1B, that nobody's really talked about, is the disadvantage is, there's a cumulative tax rate that is at the upper limit. And, you know, we're all experiencing a financial crisis at this time. And so, you know, that's a major concern of mine, is that, you know, we're going out to ask our voters for, or, you know, taxpayers for money to support this option, yet we're gonna be taxing them at a higher rate.
It's, it's always a concern. And ultimately, voters have the ultimate decision of whether they want to do it or not. All we can do, from our perspective, is to provide them the best plan that we possibly can to make sure we're not doing things to waste their money, and voters ultimately get to decide. The, the reason, it, we could have packaged this all in one bond, okay, and say it's, it's, it's one, and it includes everything. The problem with that, from my perspective, and it's a political perspective, is that I think it would be hard to, somebody would say, with $2.1 billion of needs, why are playgrounds in there? Are they the highest needs that you have? Well, for some people, they may be. But it's hard to select them out. But if you go into the elementary schools and you go there, they are needs, but it gives people an option. We're not saying they're our highest needs. Our highest needs are directed in the primary bond, the 1A. But if people, but we're giving them an option. These are things we would like to do, and we're not gonna do them unless you support that, and that's why we put them in a, in a separate bond. And that's part of the challenge. I mean, if you add both of those tax rates, we're still under the $60 legal limit, which we don't have to be, but we, but we are. But we're trying to do it in a respectful way to give, to say to people, we're not trying to hide playgrounds in the terminology of technology. We're not trying to, to do these things in, in some places and trying to hide it behind science labs. They're, they're distinct things, and you as voters get to choose. And I think that is the ultimate honesty that we can do. And if voters are, are willing, they will, they will do that. And to put it, and to put a, a price on it, that that's what, that's what it costs. And that's one of the reasons we separated those things out, because they, they, it would be hard to say they were the highest priorities, or the, the top third of the priorities in the district, because there's other things that aren't, including, as we talked about earlier, the transformation of some of the elementary schools or other middle schools. That was, that was the reasoning behind it.
So, you know, in the options, secondary options, I do see kitchen facilities as being part of the smaller bond. But, you know, I, I'm not feeling comfortable in giving any particular direction on any one of the options, because I haven't had the benefit of looking at the entire master plan. And, you know, I'm, I'm not even sure if the people in the voting area that, that I, I represent, I see that a bond polled, polled pretty positively in Area 5. But I think it's just right to go out and invite those people who will be voting on this matter, and invite them to, to take a look, at least for those improvements that will be done in those specific areas, all seven of them. You know, I, so I, I do feel a little bit more comfortable about the tracking poll and the direction on, on giving some of that, because that would help better inform the board. But as far as a direction on which specific option, I, I can't, with the conscious, I can't go forward with a direction on that. And then somebody, I can't remember who said this, but alluded to some type of training that had taken place. I don't, did I miss a training? Was there a training that took place on this?
Facility staff.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So, I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. But I think that what would help to clear things up for board members is perhaps between now and before July 19th, maybe we have a series of workshop meetings to review, because I don't think we can do a review of the entire master plan in one workshop meeting. But if we can do a series of meetings to review the entire master plan for the district, to help enlighten the board of what all is entailed in this master plan.
What's your view of this?
Not the entire master plan, for every single school site. You know, we've had Vice President Cunio ask, did this entail improvements to Kit Carson? And had we had that thorough review of our master plan, we would, had had that answer. So, if we can, you know, oblige those of us who would like it, that would be.
I'd also note that it, all this has been posted on your website. So, it's, the public has access to all of this now. And it's, again, there's a lot of information there, but it's, it's, I, I haven't, you know, I mean, I say this again, I've not seen it, school districts anywhere, anywhere, go to the level that you have gone in terms of, of a, 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 a plan like this, and also the transparency, just to put it up there so that people can, can take a look and understand it. so that people can, can take a look and understand it. And I think it's been, it's been terrific. Now, all of the things that you suggest need to be done, we need to work at that. Keep in mind, the, we are in a fast timeframe over the next, over the next month to move forward. So there's, there's some process things that may get, be not as, as thorough as we would, as we probably all would like. But we just have to be able to move forward to be able to make the timeframe to be on the ballot in, in November.
Board Member Kennedy?
I think that there's, you know, ample opportunity for individual board members to look at the materials which are all publicly available to us. We have, the consultants are willing to meet with us, I would imagine, when we have questions and issues and so forth, as well as staff. But it's, you know, to, to hold, you know, multiple workshops to go over the site plans for 83 facilities is just, that's just not reasonable. It's just not practicable.
Thank you.
There's no other board member questions? So I guess there's a couple of pieces of a, of a request. We had a request for a direction on a tracking poll. I understand that tonight, this item is not scheduled to be acted upon. So I'm not sure what the legalities are of providing direction.
You can provide direction without an action to staff or to your consultants. I think that's what they're looking for. Because I think on July 19th will be your last opportunity to take action.
Can I make a point of clarification?
Please, me.
Well, you're asking about a tracking poll that we wouldn't pay for.
Member Terry?
We, we don't need to give guidance for the tracking poll because it's not paid for, but with, with school district funds, if I'm correct.
No, that's, if we're going to do a tracking poll, we would have to use some district funds to do it.
This wouldn't come out of a campaign fund for, for the bond? I'm just trying to understand.
There's, there's, there's not a big balance in that campaign fund at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Interesting. Well, I mean, if it involves expenditure of district funds, then it has to be up for.
Well, that would be an action item. What I heard was, I thought I heard is, are you going with one or two bonds? You know, Ju, July 19th is when I think you're going to have to take action, if you're going to take action on the proposals before you. But what I heard was two bond possibilities, both are one or, you know, Option 1A. So I think that was a question by Mr. Tamitola for direction, but I'm not positive.
If I may.
President, yes.
Do you feel as you have, do you feel like you have sufficient direction at this point in time?
I have a pretty good read of the room. I think I have a pretty good sense of, of where we're going. So I don't know if we need to take more formal action. I think that the, you know, the question of a, of a, the tracking poll is not a political tracking poll for campaign purposes. It's really if you desired it to be, before you put this on the ballot, to have a certain comfort level that the things you're recommending or your things that we were recommending are, are in fact supported. And so that we could, we could take action. I mean, I'm, you know, we could move on that and you could vote on that at the proper time if it's not now. If it's not been agendized, it could be, it could be done at some point in time. But I think we need to get moving in terms of being able to draft it and write it. But I have a pretty good sense of, in answer to your question, a sense of where the board, I think, was, is probably going to go without being presumptuous, which I would never do.
Okay.
Publicly.
Thank you for your clarity. Thank you for your clarity on that. So I, we don't have any more, no further questions or comments by anyone up at the dais. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Item 10.3, Facility Use Agreements for Charter Schools. It is an action item, 10-minute presentation, 30-minute discussion. Ms. Sarah Noguchi.